I'd like to call to order the work session on June 25, 2018. Vice Mayor Campbell is not here this evening, so we will excuse you at the next meeting. Is that correct? All right, thank you. So, we have one work session item tonight, and I would like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete. 3.1, the council will receive an update on the progress and timelines of revising the development impact fees. And of course, we have Lori Wigan-Roth, Finance Manager, Budget and Research, to presenting. Laura?
All righty, thank you all.
All right, Lori, you've got it.
All righty. Thank you for giving us a chance to come kind of give you an update on where we are on the impact fee process. Just kind of remind you, you know, we are here because there's a statutory requirement that if you have impact fees, you have to update them regularly. So, we'll kind of go back through what that involves. Also, I want to give you an overview of the process we're following and give you an update on that process. We did have a work session in February with you, and following that, we began the process of publishing a draft plan and the process for gathering public input. And as a result of that process, we've extended the time until before we would come back to you to hold the public hearing so that we can gather more stakeholder input. So, I'll go into that in a little bit more detail, and then I'll let you know where the balance of the calendar is and the process is for updating these fees.
Before you go any further, Lori, I just want to tell the council, we have to start the regular meeting at 6:00. So, if we're running over time, we're going to reconvene this session at the end of the regular meeting. All right? All right, go ahead.
All righty. So, first, just to remind you, and the first several slides of this presentation are, a lot of them are straight out of the prior presentation we did in February, but, and then we'll get into some of the new information. So, just as a reminder, the state statute says that if you have impact fees, you have to update the underlying plans at least every five years. And many other cities are in this process now. We are slightly ahead of those other cities, but we should start seeing the first postings similar to what we did in March from some of those cities here in the next month or two. The statute set forth the specific procedures and timelines that were required to follow in order to do this update. Oops. And the fees that would come out of this must be based on the council adopted land use assumptions and an infrastructure improvement plan. And so, that's the step we're at, is getting to your eventual adoption of those plans that underlie the fees. The statute defines that impact fees can only be collected for growth-related eligible infrastructure, and the type of infrastructure that's eligible is outlined in the statutes. And just as a reminder, this is not for the operation and maintenance of those facilities. This is strictly the actual capital facilities. In the case of something like police and fire, it can also include the vehicles. We cannot exceed the existing service levels in what we include in the IIP. So, one of the first steps in this process was to evaluate our current service levels, and again, that's in terms of the facilities that we're providing. And then the statute also requires that all land uses are subject to the fees, so that you can't exclude, for example, you know, before this current statute, it may be that not everybody had a parks fee assessed against commercial land uses, but the statute requires that you have to find a way to relate your, those infrastructure services to all types of land uses. Just as a reminder, I wanted to quickly go through these same slides we showed you before. We do not have impact fees that cover our entire city. The area shown in blue, essentially the north half of the city, boundaries, has impact fees in place now. This particular slide shows you the current service areas or geographic areas within our current impact fee plan. The blue area represents what's called north. The pink area in the middle represents what's called central. And the green and yellow area in the southern portion is what is called south. In most cases, for most types of services such as fire or parks, we only have two fees, one for the south and one for the combined north and central. But streets in particular has three fees, the south, the central, and the north currently. And then just to review, water and wastewater, you notice on that prior map, there was a part of the south area that was a different color. That's because utilities do not incorporate the entire south area that the other fee areas incorporate. So, this shows you that the green area is what is considered water and wastewater in the south. And then the blue and the shaded brownish color from here, it looks at it, is the utility fees to the north, so they extend a little bit into where we have services north of the I-10. This is a rough depiction of kind of the statutory process with a little bit of information built in, in terms of the process we've done so far. The first step is to develop a draft, a land use assumption and IIP, or the Infrastructure Financing Plan. That took staff about nine months, so we hired a consultant, and we had to work to come up with the growth assumptions and identify current service levels, relate those to cost, come up with projects that we need. So, that was about a nine-month process, and that was what we came to you in February with to review. Based on your February feedback, we went forward with and posted that draft plan, and that posting was done on March 21, because we had to finalize the plan based on the feedback that we had received. The statute says that we have to take a minimum of 60 days to allow the public to view and review that posted draft. And we began that process, you'll see in the graphic, we've identified a different color there. This is what I'm going to talk to you about in terms of we've extended the process longer than the statute requires in order to gather good stakeholder input. Once we finish this stakeholder process, then we'll get back into the normal statutory process of conducting a public hearing, which is then also an opportunity for the public to provide input on the draft. And then between that, after that, we go into adopting those plans, and then to the statutory process for adapting, adopting the fees. So, in essence, the extension that we've provided for the stakeholder feedback is probably extending us into March or April before we had established our fees instead of in January of 19, as when we came to you in February. To just kind of go over again what the information was that was included in the plan that we reviewed with you and that we posted, the land use assumptions were based on MAG and DES information, as well as adjusted for recent activity in our local environment, and they were prepared by Elliott Pollak and Company on behalf of our consultant. The assumptions in the plan are about 4.2% per year growth in population, which adds a little bit over 41,000 people. Job growth is at about 3.7% per year, which adds just over 15,000 jobs in the 10 years. One thing that we've already determined in reviewing the draft plan is that we need to make some technical revisions with regard to where those jobs are assigned geographically. We've probably assigned too many jobs to the south and are making revisions to keep the same number of jobs, but changing the distribution of those jobs between the north and the south. And then just a reminder that the infrastructure, these population numbers, the current population and then the forecasted population drive what the infrastructure is that's required. When we met with you in February, we talked about that we'd applied the growth pays for growth assumption. That has been a consistent message. That meant, and we, that we included the full costs of projects. In some cases, that means if an expansion triggers some other expense, we've included that in the impact fee cost. An example of that would be utility relocations, if you have to widen a street and now you have to relocate utilities, we've associated those costs to the impact fee program. We've also included inflation. Inflation was not included in the current plan. That's one of the reasons that we're moving forward at this timeframe, is our current planned costs were already outdated by the time the plan was adopted because inflation had not been assumed in preparing those costs. And we've also added the cost of anticipated financing. And again, that's the situation where we have to build a water plant now, but that water plant will be consumed over 20 years, say, of growth, and so we have to finance that, and the cost of that financing is spread throughout the plan. And wherever feasible, we have included 10 years' worth of infrastructure based on that relationship between the current service level and the forecasted growth. So, in some cases, and a difference from our current plan is, the forecast may say, you know, that, and these aren't real numbers, and no one would say that for every person, we need 50 square feet of fire station. So, we would multiply the number of people times 50 to come up with the square footage of fire station that we need in the coming 10 years. And that may be smaller or larger than what we all know one of our fire stations is, but that's all we can allocate to demand, is the part that they are causing us to experience. And so, these are the fees that we presented at the work session, and they are calculated based on those land use assumptions and those cost assumptions. As you can see, and as we have had, continue to make clear, they are significant cost increases. And again, remind everybody, this is the first step in a process that takes time to go through a review and reconsider what has been included. So, these are the fees in the south, I mean, excuse me, in the north-central area, and you'll notice we've combined streets, north and central, and that's one of the recommendations that we included, was that we go to a single, or two fees for streets as we do for the other areas. So, there would be one north-central fee instead of a north fee, a central fee, and then a south fee for streets. And then these are the, how the cost worked out compared to our current plan in the south area. And again, we've identified the main reasons for those increases. An example would be the, you know, in water, we've had to swap out the surface water plant for well-based solutions, added a radio tower and police, those types of items. We've now provided a, information on commercial fees as well. This gives you a comparison for a 20,000-square-foot retail, a 40,000-square-foot office, and a $400,000, or 400,000-square-foot industrial. And you can see in those areas, the fees are large numbers. Again, they're building large properties, these are businesses, so these fees are higher, and therefore, the increases in them are also higher when compared to the single family. This is a slide, again, I'll remind you that we're at the beginning of this process and many other cities are. This slide provides some comparisons to other cities' current fees, so the darker-colored bars represent current impact fees. And so, for example, the first three are our north-central and south fees. Our north fees don't include utilities, and that's why they're lower there. And the individual colored bars within this are different types of service area, because not all cities charge the same fees. Some cities don't have a streets fee. If you look at Surprise, they don't have a streets fee. If you look at Buckeye, they have a library fee. So, they're not the same. And then the kind of faded-out bar, two bars at the end, are what our fees would be under the current plan that has currently been drafted. And we'll continue to update this slide in future meetings as we find information from other cities, as they start to post their draft plans. Oops, okay. Now, I thought, so that's essentially the information we shared with you previously. What I wanted to do is give you a little bit of information about the stakeholder process that we've started. We had told you when we met with you in February, we were going to hold two stakeholder meetings between the posting of the plan and before we had the public hearing. We sent invitations out to over 300 individuals through, for all of the sessions that we've scheduled. We've posted materials and information on the website and also sent any materials out with the invitations. As we've moved through the process, we're providing more information on the costs, some background information. We are also using some prior meeting summaries as we go from one meeting to the next with the stakeholders. There's been, these have been well-attended. There's a broad range of stakeholders, it's representing all facets of the development industry. They've been high-active participants. It's been a very positive process in terms of the interaction and the type of information being provided. So, we originally planned to hold those two meetings, one on May 2 and one on May 8, and because of the feedback that both we and you received after the plan was posted, we held the first meeting, we went over the plan, we used very much similar presentations we'd used with you in February. And from the feedback, we came back to that second scheduled meeting, and instead of doing additional discussion, we revised a proposal for expanded stakeholder outreach and got general buy-in from the group that that was where they were interested in going as well. So, we now have had, we had a meeting on June 5 to address the growth assumptions, the police-fire-and-parks area, and then we just had a meeting last week on the streets area. And on July 16, we'll be having a meeting on the water, wastewater, and then other overall topics such as the construction sales tax or revenue offsets. Some of the types of topics that are coming through these stakeholder meetings is, one of the messages we heard at that first meeting was that it, the, having this plan out there posted does create some uncertainty in the market, and people are concerned that taking too long may be as much of a problem as going too quickly. So, we are trying to balance the time to allow for additional stakeholder input with the apparent uncertainty that it creates, so we're trying to continue to move efficiently through this process. Lot of questions came in initially about project costs, and then also about how we determine the service level that would be included. So, a little bit more detail on the stakeholder meeting-specific feedback. We've talked a little bit about, I said earlier, how if we had that 50 square foot per person, we would forecast how many square foot of fire station that is. So, that's kind of this incremental demand approach. But there's also been some discussion about, should we just plan what facilities we think we're going to build in the next 10 years and include those? There's also suggesting we only consider the next five years of building, however we're required to do a 10-year plan. There's been a lot of discussion about what streets projects should be included, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. There's discussion about making sure that we're properly reflecting what I'm calling crossover projects. It's projects that exist today or that are being constructed today, where there's still capacity that growth hasn't technically consumed, so that we build the water plant in five years, but we really need to be spending it in the impact fee over, say, 15 more years. So, for example, in the south area, we still have a park that we're paying, reimbursing for, so the, what that represents in terms of acreage needs to be included as part of the future growth. We'll use that, so it would mean current costs would be the first thing to be spent against the fee. There's a lot of talk about the construction sales taxes. You know, there's a requirement that because our construction sales tax is higher than our other fees, or other sales taxes, that incremental increase is dedicated to the impact fee programs. There's discussion on that topic, and that will be at the meeting in July. A lot of talk about comparisons to other cities in market, and there's a lot of apples and oranges sorting through going on in that particular spot. We had situations where somebody may have said, hey, here's a park that Phoenix built, it costs a lot less per acre than what you're proposing. When you got that information, you saw, well, it's a park that's shared with a school, they're not providing parking, the land is already there, you know, design costs weren't included. And when we looked at Phoenix's infrastructure plan, our park, costs per acre were very similar. And so, the group has been very good about going through that process with us and sharing information that they have, and are very good about listening and, you know, coming to a point of where, you know, we aren't to the point of coming to agreements, but we're the point of agreeing to what the issues are and what the priority, or what the pluses and minuses, I don't know of a better word for that. We are then, so after each meeting with the stakeholders, we prepare a list of the items that are still outstanding or that we're researching. We're going to be using this listing for future work sessions with you, for future stakeholder meetings, and we're trying to classify the items into technical items or mechanical corrections, just made a mathematical error in tracing A to B, or something like reallocating these jobs from the south to the north to better match what we really think is going to happen. So, those are kind of some of the examples of technical things. Another example of a technical item would be determining the current service level for parks as to whether or not we include a portion of the Goodyear Ballpark in that calculation or not. And so, technical issues would be staff's intent to correct those before we, as just proper corrections, they're not, it's just doing the proper thing according to the statute. Then the other items are being classified as policy, and those are the items we would anticipate coming back to you with to have, after you hold the public hearing, we would schedule a couple work sessions to get your input on the policy issues. Some example of some policy things are, what streets do we include? What aspects of streets do we include? For example, do we include street lighting as part of the cost, or do we not? Do we include sidewalks? So, and those come into play, whether we're dealing with scallop streets or not. So, those are some of the big policy discussions that are going on, and that's why we gave streets an entire two-hour meeting with the group. In terms of the next steps, again, adopting this infrastructure improvement plan is the key step at this point in time, because whatever we adopt as that plan, we are obligated to ensure that the infrastructure in that plan is built. And in addition, we have to assure that the funding is available to do those things. And so, if something's included in the plan as something that's eligible for impact fees, and for some reason, we decided to not adopt the fees that support the plan, the city would be responsible for making up the difference between what the plan calls for and what the revenues are expected to bring in. So, just kind of go over what the current calendar looks like, kind of in comparison to our original calendar. We started back with you in February, again, as a result of adding these stakeholder meetings through June and July. Instead of doing the public hearing on May 21, we're planning on doing it on August 27. And so, again, that would be a public, an opportunity for the public who perhaps have not come to these stakeholder meetings to also give you feedback and input before you make final decisions on the plan. Then we'll hold two work sessions, one on September 20 and one on October 1, to give you, here's the technical changes that we're recommending, here's the things we want to have a policy discussion and input on. And so, we'll take two meetings to do that in order to ensure that if we receive policy direction at the first meeting, we can come back to you at the second meeting with information on what that did. And then we would plan to have you adopt the plans on October 22. It's important that we keep that timeframe, or the process would have to go back to where we post the plan again. So, that, that's a critical window between August 27 and October 22. Once you adopt the plans, then we go into a separate process for fee adoption. It really is pretty much a, it's just allows the public, the community more time to adopt to the new fees and prepare for them. So, we would post the next day what the fees would be, and then you go through a process. Again, this, the timelines are required by statute of posting it, allowing for public comment, having a public hearing, adopting the fees. The fees would then become effective probably in March or April if we stick with this schedule. And I'll just remind you that there is also a moratorium, that some developments would not be subject to the new fees for up to 24 months, and it's just the statute defines the conditions that keep you in a moratorium condition. That was a quick run-through of the information. Be happy to answer any questions, provide any information.
I really appreciate that. We are going to end this meeting, and the discussion's going to have to come after the next meeting. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We have a 6:00, right? And we need to get up on the dais. It doesn't have magic, we actually physically have to do that, so, and I know it kind of delays, but please keep your thoughts in mind and your questions on your paper so when we come back to it. Apologize to the audience that are here for this. I know the discussion part is one of the most important things you want us here tonight, but you'll just have to be patient with us. So, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll go to the dais and start the other. I'd like to reconvene the work session that we recessed earlier. Lori Wigan-Roth? You can continue now.
All righty. Made it hastily through the presentation, so questions or anything you want me to recap?
Thank you. Council questions? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Can you go back to the slide with the pricing for commercial first, when it showed the 20?
This one? The commercial or the?
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
Yep.
And again, I know we're still going through the process, but one of my concerns, since we're trying to recruit retail, amusements, restaurants, et cetera, you know, you look at that retail, and that's 100% increase. Is that right, current south? Change?
Yep.
244. Office space, not quite 100%, but 50%. That's kind of, that's kind of concerning to me, especially if we're going to try to recruit, and how does that compare with cities in the reciting area? Those kind of numbers, they may want to go somewhere else, so concerned about that. And when you flip back, I think it's one more slide on the housing.
Whoa, that one crazy?
Hey, the housing. I would like to see where we fit in there totally, and then I assume our policy discussion when we get into the streets and to parks, that may drive some of that, some of those numbers, I'm guessing. But I think that's very helpful from a competitive standpoint as well. Again, I don't want to be short-sighted and not having the money to do what we need done, but from a policy standpoint, if some of that's shifting to the developer or whatever, then maybe that may, you know, have a direct relationship to bringing some of those prices down. But the retail, the restaurant, the commercial, that kind of worries me a little bit, competitive. That's why I would love to see where we are with other cities when we come to that point of presenting some, some hard numbers.
Councilmember, thank you. We're very sensitive to those, those issues as well. And as I mentioned on this slide before, we will continue to monitor what the other cities are doing and update it for, for any new numbers that come, become available.
Okay. Councilwoman Laura Tannen?
That was also my concern when I saw the business, commercial, retail. If we can get a map kind of like this one here that shows where we are, because I don't want to be the highest one, I want to make sure we meet our needs, but I don't want to be, you know, way out of kilter with that and chase away development, because we may have projections, but if no one wants to build, then it doesn't really matter what we need. And same thing for the housing. I appreciate the fact, and thank you for going through the process and talking to the community partners in this area, because we do look a little right now out of kilter. So, as you go through, I know the process, hopefully that'll, will come down, and we'll see where other people are, because that would concern me if we're, you know, obviously we have needs that need to be met, but again, if we, you know, say this is what our needs are, and nobody builds, you get nothing. So, I think we need to be sensitive to that and try to make sure that we kind of stay in the grouping of everybody else and aren't so far out. So, I appreciate you looking at that and working with the community.
Councilmember Stip?
I've got a couple. First of all, I agree 100% with what Councilmember Pizzillo said about the industrial fees and the retail fees, et cetera. I think we've really got to, we have to be very, very careful about that. The competitive part of what this will do to us is very, very disturbing to me. We all know exactly what happened to the city of Avondale when they were first to market with their new fees and how building absolutely came to a stop. And everything that we've been working on for the last five or six years about bringing in rooftops and trying to be aggressive with retail and industrial can all be for naught if we, if we blow this out of the, out of the water. So, my, my first question, I'll go with the hard one first, and then we'll go from there. from there. In the, the streets element, if you will, we've added some roadways and some projects in there that are more than just developer-driven impacts. So how does the MAG funding that we get for roadways, et cetera, how does that affect these numbers? And the example that popped into my head is, while we were doing this, is like, is the Estrella Bridge. It's used by not only EMR or in our southern region, but it's also used regionally by Rainbow Valley, which is county, and then there's some Buckeye folks that, you know, take the back way to get up to I-10, et cetera. How does, or even from the east. So how does, how does that work with us balancing this road, which we think we're going to hold to the southern impact versus a regional roadway? How does that all, how does that come into play?
Mayor, councilmember, a couple of things for that question. One thing I want to let you know that we are evaluating the lifespan, the timeframe over which that bridge is, will absorb growth, and we may be extending that beyond the 10 years that are already planned. The other portion of this would be if we knew that we would be receiving any type of federal dollars or MAG dollars towards this project, we would reduce that cost of that project by that amount, because that would be considered a revenue offset, per se. So at this point in time, I'm not aware of any expectation of MAG dollars on that project, so we have not taken that into consideration, but we can certainly explore that before we come back with a policy, with the policy discussion.
Well, I don't know that I'm necessarily looking for an answer to that. I guess it's a bigger, kind of more philosophical, how does it work? We don't know when we're ever going to get MAG funding. But if we have a roadway that we've identified in our IIP as this is going to be paid for with impact fees, there's no incentive for MAG to say, well, here, we'll throw you, we'll throw you a million dollars, because you're already going to pay for it some other way. And some of these roadways, and that was just the example, was the Estrella Bridge, but I look at a number of these roadways, and some of them really become east-west corridors or north-south corridors. So maybe this is a question we can answer offline.
Yeah, and we will, the, the net, we're having our meeting in July, that would be the type of topic that would also be discussed with the stakeholders. So I, I believe I understand what you're saying, and we will explore that further. We should certainly be taking that into consideration and adjusting for that. Part of the formulas of establishing the streets demand does take into account things like pass-through traffic and those types of things. So I, I'm hearing a message that I, is kicking off something in my mind that I need to go back and look at, what, what did we assume in terms of pass-through traffic on that particular project? I know we've considered it in coming up with the total miles that would, that the level of service would demand, but I don't know how we handled it project by project, so it's definitely an area we'll add to our list of more technical research and follow-up.
Perfect, thanks. And then my, my other question is kind of right on that same line with the stakeholders. Very, very appreciative, and we've done this every year, when we've done it, is involve the stakeholders early and often, and I think that is really important for us as a, as a community. How, how have the stakeholders reacted to the updated calendar? Has that been a positive? Are they, are they okay with that? I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for that.
Yes, the stakeholders at that second meeting, the first meeting we had in May with the stakeholders, it was very clear that they felt they would like to have more opportunities for input. They wanted to get into the specific area, service areas, and have a more in-depth conversation. So at the second meeting in May, when we presented the calendar and the recommendation, I would characterize it as well-received. I believe they, it, it, nobody has come forward and said, you know, no, this won't work, it's, it seems to be moving along, and haven't got any negative feedback about it.
Okay, so, which is really good news. So I think, you know, obviously we heard from an element of the development community that made some really good points about some of the distress that this is causing in the marketplace with the idea of the, these kinds of, of rate increases. And if, I share that, that concern. I think if we're, we have been so, so hot that this appears to be throwing water on that, and I'm, I'm concerned, I'm very concerned about that. So if you're looking for what's our take on some of these things, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to identify early that we're not going to talk about almost a 50% increase, or, or actually 100% increase. We're going to talk about something less. We can get that word out, even though it's informally, I think the marketplace understands the difference between council action and council consideration. But I'd like to see us move in, in that direction, so thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I mean, you probably hit all the points. Yeah, we're concerned about the, yeah, cooling of the market, what this sends out to the, the, the one, the building community, and then also our, just the, the rates on the economic development portion of it, too, with the office and retail. So same, same concerns, I'm just reiterating. So I think we're all on board with the same kind of concern, but thank you so much for reaching out to stakeholders. I think that's very vital to making sure we come to a good, a good product at the end. So thank you.
I too value our meeting with the stakeholders, and that we, we are listening. I do worry about the density. We've worked so hard, and, you know, every time we go out for something, oh, you don't have enough density. So we're finally getting to the point where we are getting density. I would not want to see that halt. And in the home development, that can happen, because there are, you know, they're, they're committed financially to loans and different things that they have to, as any business does. But we've had some really specific goals to move our city forward. And when I drive the streets and see all these spec buildings, big, big buildings, they're going to bring industry and manufacturing in, and there's still a desire to build more from these individuals, I'm not sure that more will come. So I am concerned. And I understand that they have to, they have to pay their way, too. It isn't, it isn't one-sided. But I, the timing, oh, the timing that we have to be discussing this without looking at the other cities. But we knew, do know, and we did hear from Councilman Pizzillo, Avondale went through this. And I went over and talked to the mayor and some of the other people of Avondale about it, because I, you know, had heard it, and I don't want us to become that. But we have to be realistic. So I think by your continuous meeting with the developers and so forth will help us maybe come to a common, a common idea, common goal, where both parties can walk away and feel that, that we're getting sufficient amount for each of us to be able to develop our city and then develop their, their, their construction. So, yeah, concern, concern is there, so.
And your council members. That, I mean, that's certainly the stated goal of the group, that we all want to get to a point where we have a common understanding. And in the end, what we want to make sure as we present council, here's the, here's what there is, and here are the decisions, and so that we all understand what we intend to fund with impact fees and what we intend to fund in other ways, and that's the goal we hope to get to.
Yeah, and we have to be responsible of citizens' money. All right, so we, we know that, we know that side of it, and what their expectation is, so we respect that. So yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a hill to climb, but I think, well, I think we'll get there. And again, thank you for all the meetings and opening the doors to them and repeating things, so it's just great, so. So that meeting is July, is that what you said, 27th?
August 27th. It'll be your second work session back from, or your second meeting back from your break, is where we'll hold the public hearing. At that point in time, we'll provide you a summary of the feedback through the stakeholder process. We may have some initial positions on some of those items, but the point of the public hearing is to allow further input on what was already posted than that first work session we come to in September. We'll have some clear recommendations.
Well, I think we've all heard some of the stakeholders' responses, from anger, to wanting to negotiate, to understanding and not understanding. I could use a lot of words to describe what we've heard at this point, but I guess the main thing, we need to do what's right. So we'll, we'll just have to work through this from both sides, and so we can all come out with a smile on our face, saying we're going to, the city's going to progress, so. And thank you, it's a tough job you have.
Thank you.
All right. So anything else that needs to be, no? I think we cleared everything, look at this. So I'm going to be happy to adjourn this meeting.